So it is 6:30 PM on Monday, March 16th. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting in Lakeville. Tonight with us first, we're gonna, we have Senator Michael Rodericks with us and Representative Norman Orell. Thank you. Welcome to both of you for coming. I understand that I'm still sort of new, so this is something that you do to sort of get the town up to speed on where you're at and give us an opportunity to ask questions.
Absolutely.
So I don't, I'm sorry?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So I don't know if either one of you wants to make a statement, say something first, go right to questions?
Well, I'll see if you would. So, you know, obviously, we're here tonight, and I know there was a lot of discussion on whether we should be here, but we did feel it was important. We were scheduled to be here for a while just to do a regular update. I think it is key for us today, with everything that's going on, to be here. We are, as you can see on camera, if you're home, we're all trying to keep our distance. We're trying to abide my best practices right now, and we just ask the people at home watching that they do so as well. And for me, I think we're looking forward to see some of your questions, and we can fill in blanks based on those, I think. But Senator?
Thank you. Thank you, Representative. Thank you. Yeah, it's really, it's great to be here. I think it's important that we maintain an open line of communication between state and municipal government. You know, you're where the rubber hits the road, so things that we deal with, bills that we vote on, actions that we take at the state level, well, you're the one that has to implement those actions. So it's important that we hear from you the real practical implications of what we do up at the State House. I'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce Caitlin Rowley, who's from Lakeville. She's my district director. So Caitlin, I say, keeps me out of trouble down here in the district while I'm up in Boston getting into trouble. And it's really, we're really in uncharted times right now. I was telling you earlier that every Monday, as Chair of the Senate Committee on Ways and Means, the Senate President and I, along with the Speaker of the House, Speaker DeLeo and Chairman Mickiewicz from the House, meet with the Governor, Lieutenant Governor, and Chairman of the, Secretary of his Administration of Finance, just to go over, just to go over things, to have a quote-unquote "leadership" meeting. Generally lasts about an hour. Today it was two and a half hours, just trying to figure out what we are gonna do in this new, with this new crisis of COVID-19. And as we were speaking, literally, President Trump was on the television making new suggestions. So we're really in uncharted territory, and the only way we're gonna get through this together is to work together and to stick together.
Okay. I do, again, appreciate having you both here, and like you mentioned, this was planned well in advance of, you know, the virus. So I'm glad that you could be here, too. And again, I reiterate the same things, that the social distancing is key. I do know that Selectmen on the Camera has a couple of questions, plus we worked and put a couple of questions together. I don't know if you wanna start?
Whatever. You want me to start with number one?
Well, I've actually been working a lot on the APC.
Go ahead.
The grant money that we received, so that we could do the study. And I do know that the pond complex is super important to a lot of people in town, and you were, the Senator was able to get us a substantial grant to do studies, so that by the end of that study, we'll be able to know, you know, exactly what the problems are and what the way is that we may be able to, you know, to help and prevent, like, the flooding. And I think one thing that's come from all the meetings is that it's not just one problem. But I didn't know if you could give us any update on your end, or if you like the work that we're doing with the grant money, or the direction that we should go, or?
I think the work that you're doing with the grant money is exactly what we envisioned when we, when we secured the grant. So in 2010, as I was running for state senate, it was my first foray into the free town Lakeville part of what's now my senatorial district. And the spring of 2010 is when we had all that flooding. So I witnessed firsthand the devastation of that. And since then, we've heard a lot of suggestions, people have had a lot of ideas of what we can do to prevent that from happening again. But they were just ideas, there were opinions, and what we really need is some real scientific empirical data. We do know that the pond complex is very flat and level, and we do all know that water seeks its own level, so it's very difficult in trying to manage and control the water. So working with Representative Orell, we were able to secure some money in the budget, and we hired, you all hired, through the Department of Environmental Restoration?
Reclamation.
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 SERPET to lead the study. They have regional experience, they know how to handle state grants, and I think they've done a really good job. And from what I'm hearing, everyone seems to be happy with the direction they're going.
I know I've been to, you know, several of those meetings, and the, the science level in that room is incredible. There's some really incredibly talented, educated people working, you know, on the problem here. So from, from me, that's, I really appreciate, you know, whatever, whatever the help that you've been able to give us in that. And I'm looking forward to hopefully being able to find some more money down the road so that we can, you know, try to work on some of these issues that they're gonna?
And I think what's important is, you know, that when I met with the Senator when this first came up, we met with the Department of Environmental Reclamation, it is the first time we've gotten a state agency involved in the problem, at least with some money from the budget that was secured by the Senator to fund this study. And there is, I believe, money in the capital bond bill, in environmental bond bill, that potentially can fund projects that maybe this study leads us to. And I think that was kind of the intent, was to get the study done to see what can be done in the future. But, do you wanna add?
No, no, that's, yeah, this study will provide the scientific data to secure capital money, because that's where the big bucks come in, to do, whether it's dredging something or fix a dam or cover it, or the real, where the real dollars are, that's funded through bond bills. But in order to access the money in the bond bill, you really need to have the data.
The science.
The science. So keep our fingers crossed, but I think we're moving in the right direction.
And as I understand, the steps would be, you know, when, when conclusions and potential projects come out of this first step, that that'll be brought back through the department to the Secretary of Environment, and then we can advocate for some of those projects, for those to get added to the capital plan. They maintain a five-year capital plan every year. At this point, it'll probably be for the next year's capital plan, that maybe they would be adding some of these projects and asking them to use, authorize the use of the bond money that is available. And so the first step is this, this huge step. And then from there, it would be a matter of hopefully convincing the administration that these are important projects to go on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have momentum now, you know?
Right.
And it's been a lot of people involved, the cities in Bedford and Taunton.
Right.
The state agency and so forth, and Middleborough. And this is extremely important. I mean, you experienced it yourself, Senator, back in 2010. And so we want to make sure we continue pushing this forward, because if we don't, it'll happen again sometime. So thank you for your support on that project.
Absolutely.
And I mean, I think with, having the state involved at that level, and then working with SERPET at the local level as a local, you know, expert, I think that that's what is kind of allowing everybody, the cities and the towns, everybody to kind of be on the same page. And that's what we're hopefully here for as a state body, to help bridge the gaps and the arguments between various communities, and be a resource that then everybody can get together. And it seems like people are getting together on this one.
Yeah, there really is some incredible room to be sitting in. I know Caitlin and Lorraine, they're, it's just, you know, the level of expertise. So that's one thing that I wanna let the folks at home know, is, you know, it's not one simple problem that, it's not a matter of just lowering the boards, or, you know, it's, it's a lot, but there's a lot going into this right now, and we really appreciate, you know, the help that we're getting.
And eventually, once permits allow, the Herring Commission still has money through the budget, as well as the town budgets, to work with in clearing some of the weeds and adding that into the project, you know, as, that may be the first thing, hopefully it's the first thing, if permits can be fully secured, to get out there and at least start on part of the solution. And of course, that's mainly for the herring, but I think it benefits everybody else.
Okay. Second subject, and over the years, you know, prior rep and Senator, had a number of discussions about Chapter 70 funding. And I know you're laughing, but that's okay. I guess, as you know, the House and the Senate, I get, well, they passed the, what is it called? The Student Opportunity Act, is that what it's called?
I think in the end, that's what it was called, yep.
And, you know, 161 out of the 311, you know, communities, you know, only got $30 per student. And all the cities got substantial, you know, millions of dollars, you know, worth of funding. And I think that, I would hope that the House and the Senate, you know, would consider, you know, raising that minimum per student, because, you know, when you have a school system of 2,800 students, and we only got $89,000 on a $40 million budget, that's not a lot of money. And so that's, of course, putting a lot of pressure, you know, on the local communities to provide the funding, you know, to meet the, the funding for the school budget. So I hope that's considered, you know, during the budget process that's coming up, both in the House and the Senate. The other area is the student transportation, which for years, you know, has pretty much been level funded, and, you know, we've heard a number of times that, you know, they're gonna increase that percentage and so forth, and they haven't. So once again, I would hope the House and the Senate would consider, in their budget, you know, at least increasing the percentage. I think it's at 70% right now, if I'm not mistaken. But it's been like that for a while now, so. As far as the circuit breaker money, that's a very complicated thing to talk about. They, the Governor did increase the circuit breaker money by, I think it was about $7 million as well. And I know it's phased in over, I think, a number of years, but anyways, once again, you know, that's putting pressure on the communities again, so hopefully we consider that.
Sure. I'll comment first.
Yeah, you're the, you're the--
Yeah, Chapter 70--
I'm the expert, thanks.
Yeah, it's very, very confusing. So the legislature did pass, and the Governor signed Student Opportunities Act, that after four years of what's called the Foundation Budget Review Commission's report, they did the, they did the report and they issued their, issued the report in the study, that addressed four major areas with the traditional foundation budget formula. Remember, this is a formula based upon a Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court ruling way back in 93.
Three.
That basically said that our Constitution guarantees every citizen of the Commonwealth equal, fair and equal education, regardless of where they resided. So if they reside in Lakeville, or Westport, or Weston, or Wellesley, they deserve a fair and equal education. So they created a funding formula for the first time. Prior to that, really, education funding was primarily borne by communities, where the state stepped in and plays a bigger role in funding the education of its students, the Commonwealth students. This year, they modified the formula for the first time in over 20 years significantly to address a few areas. Low-income students, for instance, it's universally recognized that it costs a lot more money to educate low-income students than it does students of moderate or wealthy upper-middle class. Healthcare, special ed, just to name a few. And a new formula was established. It's about a $1.5 billion infusion of state dollars over the next seven years. Most of those dollars will go to those communities that have the highest levels of low-income students and English-language learners, where English is not their native language, primarily the urban centers, the cities. Other communities like Lakeville and others that don't have a large number of low-income or English-language learners will see the benefit of changes to, we reckon, you commented on regional school transportation. Last year, we actually funded, we did a significant increase--
I think it was 90.
Our goal was 85%, but we ended up at 82% funding, because it changes. When we do it at the beginning of the fiscal year, we really don't know what's gonna happen at the end of the fiscal year.
But this, this right now is at 70?
No, 82%.
Wow, okay.
82%. Yep, our goal was 85. Yeah, we significantly increased the funding--
I'm sorry, you mean the Governor's budget?
The Governor's one.
That we're taking up.
Oh, the Governor's budget, yeah, well, okay. So, so I'll say this about any Governor, that the Governor's budget is more of a political statement than a practical document, because Representative Orell and I have to, and we will eventually, vote on a balanced budget. The Governor does not have to file a balanced budget. The Governor can file a budget, and they all do. This is my sixth Governor I've worked with, they've all been the same. They file a budget based on a lot of assumptions. We don't pass budgets based on assumptions. The Governor's budget, as filed, House 2, is 72%. The legislature last year increased that to, our goal was 85%, but it ended up at 82%. We will do the same again this year, increase the funding. The same thing with Chapter 70. The Governor filed a number of Chapter 70. We will do better than the Governor with Chapter 70, because education is our top priority. Regional school transportation, there's also special education circuit breaker. For the first time, what we did, both the House and Senate and the Student Opportunity Act, is we included transportation in the special, special ed circuit breaker bill. Significant. Like, to the tune of about $80 million, significant. So that's gonna help every community. I don't know what you have for charter school reimbursement in Lakeville, but we increased the funding formula for charter school reimbursement, but there's always a conflict. So I, in my senatorial district, I represent one city, one urban area, Fall River, and six suburban communities outside of that. So I see one school district, Fall River, that sees a significant amount of money, new dollars for education, because they have significantly high levels of low-income and English-language learners students. And I see six suburban communities that don't see the same level of increases.
Right.
I even have some communities that see population, school population dropping--
Sure.
--which really adds to the, less, because it's a per pupil expenditure.
Well, it'd be great that if, you know, if you are able to move that forward, because that would be significant, you know, to us. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I know that's gonna be one of my priorities, to ask for the budget. Is the regional transportation in particular to go up. And the Senator's, you know, absolutely right. It's similar, I believe, to last year, where the Governor's budget had it lower, we increased it, in, again, having to work with the final numbers.
Yep.
And, you know, I think the Governor's, you know, in his defense, what he's looked at, he's trying to implement this new act in over seven years. And by, you know, the reality was when we enacted, when we voted on the act, and it was unanimous in the House, I believe, also in the Senate vote, so we all, you know, we're all here, you can talk to us. But there really wasn't enough revenue, I don't believe, in that, you know, year sevens and so forth, getting out there at this time. So I think the Governor's trying to take a very conservative approach to his first, his, and even if that's just a message, as, you know, as has been said, to try to fund within limits what's been laid out for us. So the intent was to increase it. In year one, he's choosing to keep it a little lower.
Yeah, that's great. I'm glad you're considering that. You know, I should have mentioned Old Colony, which is--
Right.
--you know, a very, very popular school right now. We had over 300 freshmen apply--
Wow.
And there's only 500 students in the school, and we only got $14,000. So, you know, we'd like to expand programs, and, you know, and that's kind of restricting us, too. And I know that's not necessarily, you know, the House and Senate's issue, but there's just so much interest right now in vocational school. It's unbelievable.
There is. The Governor filed this budget, something called Career Technical Initiative, CTI, in order to allow our vocational schools to stay open well into the evening, to have first, second, and third shift of vocational students. So first shift would be the traditional vocational students, those students that are attending high school there. Second shift in the afternoon would be those students that are in our comprehensive high schools, a part of it and the like, to be able to go and get some training through some certificate course. And in the evening, it'd be opened up for adult learners, for adults that want to get particular training in any sort of vocational or technical skills. We might as well, we have these assets that are sitting there in these schools with all their equipment. So it's something, I won't speak for my entire, something I, an initiative that the Governor proposed, that I certainly support.
Great, thank you. Thanks for your support on that. The, the transportation bond bill and Chapter 90 funding, I'm glad to see that it's going from 200 to 300 million dollars that's in that bond bill.
So that's in the House version, right?
Right, okay. It hasn't been taken up by the Senate yet, I guess, right?
No, they haven't--
Has not been taken up by the Senate. The concern is not the funding, but what happens if that bond bill doesn't pass? Because you've pulled out the Chapter 90, you know, used to have it separately. So what would happen if that bond bill doesn't pass?
You know, I'm trying to remember, but I think, I think that we have this currently authorization elsewhere, if this particular bond bill doesn't pass.
Okay, that's, that's--
I'm pretty sure that's the answer, and, but that was added in, mainly with the goal of increasing it to the three, from 200 to 300,000.
That's great. I mean, that's terrific.
But I'm pretty sure there's other authorizations other than the transportation bond bill.
Yeah, there is. We actually, in the final deficiency closeout budget in December, we appropriated another $40 million in Chapter 90.
Correct, yeah.
So there's a, like, a 20% bonus, if you will, supplement.
We just got that, right?
You just got that, which is nice, because now you have the cash in the bank--
Yeah.
So when the construction season starts in the spring--
Ready to go.
--you can get right to work with money in the bank, so it was important. Yeah, the transportation bond bill, the Senate, it's, it's an appropriation bill. You know, there was taxes raised, gas tax was raised by five cents, diesel fuel by nine cents. Transportation network companies, the so-called Uber and Lifts of the world, had, saw their fees increase. There were other sort of revenue components to pay for the expenditures. All those type of bills, those are called, what we call money bills. Money bills start in the House. So the House did, the bill came over to the Senate. I can tell you that we were teeing it up, and then Corona hit. And so it's kind of been put on the back burner. There were about that, and about four other bills that were being teed up to do in these next few weeks before we do the budget, have all been put on the back burner while we deal with this crisis that hit us quickly.
Okay. And I'll just add to that, you know, and I haven't even had a chance. You know, we voted, there were two bills, the one, the revenue bill, then the bond bill was second. And, you know, Corona was starting to hit, and then since then, it's been nothing but Corona. I haven't even had a chance to tell the Senator, but I did get a line item in the bond bill, at least, for quiet zones in Lakeville, and that's with the South Coast Rail Extension. So it's a long way from happening. And basically, what the quiet zones are, and we'd heard, and the previous rep had heard, from Lakeville, I know I've heard from my other towns, you know, that with every crossing, the federal laws are, you have to sound the horn so many times. And there was concern about that. I know a lot of residents, and again, the past boards had asked for relief on that from Mastod. Mastod's approach has been to, if the town wants it, they have to pay for it. And how much it costs per crossing, basically, it, what it requires is that you add to your crossing to make it safe. Basically, make it sure that nobody's gonna go through it, because if the horn isn't sounding, so backup generators, all kinds of things. My research has shown about $200,000 per crossing is what's required. So that's what I put in and got into the bond bill, is 200,000 per crossing, to add on to what they were already building with South Coast Rail. So it's a long way through, it has to go through the Senate process, then, once it's in the bond bill, Mastod's gonna have to agree to do it and use the money, et cetera. So, but just to let you know, that is something that at least is out there in the, in the House version, and we'll see where it goes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't want to get into a big discussion about marijuana host agreements, because I think the whole thing is messy, you know, it's not, it's a problem. I agree, it's a problem. The only thing that we want to make sure is that it's not gonna affect any host agreements that we already have in place, even though I don't necessarily agree with some of the things that are in our current host agreements, but that's a different issue. So I believe it started in the House--
Yes.
Right?
The House has passed it. I don't think the Senate has taken it up, yeah.
So the question, one of the questions I would have is, is that most of it has to do with the impact fees, you know? I think that it's, it's the 3% impact fees that the community can charge, you know, the marijuana--
Right.
--facility, or whatever you want to call it. And it's very difficult to justify those 3%, you know, because you'd have to justify it with, you know, police, or fire, or, you know, roadwork or something, and that's pretty, pretty extreme, you know, to do that. So I think what should be done is, it should, instead, maybe a 3%, a 1%, a 1.5%, that we don't have to worry about, you know, have to do all this justification, because you have to do this justification, you know, every single year. So that's just my thoughts, and I know, I know that the House already passed it, but I agree, there needs to be a lot of work. You know, I'm not criticizing--
Yeah, it was--
I'm not criticizing the bill at all.
Right.
You know, because--
Yes.
There is problems, there's no question there's problems.
Yeah, I think the bills, I mean, it, in the end, and if this was a tough, tough bill, we had a lot of amendments, we were trying to get into and prove it, that didn't get in, that I, so I ended up not supporting the final bill because of that. But it's, 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 it's a tough thing, because it does do some things that I think are necessary. I think in the end, it, it really does favor the marijuana industry. And it was, it was purposely to take away, not necessarily this community, but some communities that were just asking for all kinds of crazy stuff. And, and basically getting it, because the marijuana industry had no choice. So that was, I think, the intent behind this, that the Cannabis Commission had heard these complaints. What they don't seem to be hearing, well, I guess they have heard, is the speed at which they're approving licenses, but I think they're working on that, from what I'm told. But yes, in the end, these will have to be approved, any of these will have to be approved by the Cannabis Commission, rather than just at the local level. They can take stuff out, and then you will have to justify up to the 3%. And--
Yeah.
So--
Anyways--
There it is.
That's a problem.
Yeah, I really don't have much of a comment on it. We're in no rush to do it in the Senate. We've heard, for a couple reasons. One, we've heard pushback from Mass Municipal Association about the changes that were made. Secondly, there is a investigation, as you know, going on by U.S. Attorney's Office, investigating those communities, because the law was very specific, that there shall be no more than 3% host community agreements. Some communities have negotiated, one way or another, payments above and beyond the 3%, 3%, and disguise them as this, that, or the other thing, not direct payments. So the U.S. Attorney is looking at it, and whenever he gets his, we say, all right, we're, you know, let him do his job, we're gonna stay away from it.
Okay.
Yep.
The-- As you know, I know that the Senate is aware of this, that, you know, there's this Long Pond Association proposing this legislation bill, you know, to take over the control, you know, of Long Pond.
Lake District.
I mean.
The district, they're calling it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Long Pond District it's called. And it hasn't gotten to us yet. It was brought up in Freetown and then it was, it was tabled. But, you know, we, including the state, ought to address, you know, some of the issues, you know, in Long Pond because Long Pond feeds the water supplies for both Bedford and, and Taunton. I mean, they think, some people think it goes the other way. Well, it doesn't go that way. And there is a lot of issues, you know, in Long Pond that, that need to be addressed and having to do with the weeds and, you know, all of those things. And one of the things that, you know, I think we ought to be more in the preventive mode instead of, you know, saying, okay, let's go and try to, you know, throw in these chemicals to kill it and so forth. And where I would start would be at the boat ramp, you know, and putting a washing station there like a lot of communities and especially up in New Hampshire and Maine have. That, you know, you're required to wash the boats before you put them in because there is a lot of fishermen that go in there through that, through that boat ramp. And so I think that the state ought to take a look at that and try to prevent it instead of just trying to treat it. And then once you're trying, you prevent it, then you can treat it. And I won't say you're gonna solve the problem a hundred percent, but certainly gonna go a long way, you know, to addressing, you know, the issue. And the, the boat ramp is a state boat ramp. It is run by the town of Freetown right now. So there's a lot of things that could be done, you know, with that boat ramp to try to prevent, you know, some of these problems. So I, I think that this is something, you know, that really should be looked at. And I would hope that the cities of Bedford and Taunton would, you know, get involved in this because they haven't been, you know, up to this point to help and try to solve some of these problems. Because, you know, a number of years ago, I mean, it's been looked at and so forth, the state was involved and so forth, but nothing's been done.
We have a passionate group of folks who are trying to put this, you know, and, and I, I mean, I don't want to say they're desperate, but I think because nothing's really been done by, you know, the people that sort of govern, they're trying to do it and try to do it themselves. And, you know, I have so, I have more unanswered questions about the way they're trying to put it together. And, 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 and it's not an easy thing. And it has to get approved, you know, by the towns, both of the towns. It has to get approved. The state, you know, so I can sense, though, that they're just frustrated too. So again, you know, just like with the other issue, it's not just a Lakeville issue. It's a Lakeville issue, it's a Freetown issue, it's, you know, the surrounding. And I, you know, I admire anyone's passion who's actually trying to step up to do something. But, you know, I don't, they actually just advertised an information session, I think, wasn't it last week we talked about it? You know, come and see what we're all about, whatever. But I feel like we should be trying to help them from a different, you know, and, and what Mr. LeCamera said would, I, I think they would be really thrilled if they could get some kind of help. You know, because the Lake District imposes a certain tax and, you know.
Yeah. So a Lake Improvement District, there's all kind of improvement districts. They're called SIDS, State Improvement District. There could be BIDS, Business Improvement District. What it is, it's a geographically defined zone where an additional tax is applied to make improvements within that zone. It does take local municipal improvement, approval and state approval. So it's, it's a very high hurdle to jump over in order to, in order to approve it. But ultimately, if the goal is to include, improve the water quality of Long Pond and if a boat wash, is that what you're saying, a boat wash would help? No one's asked, but so if somebody would make a formal request for us, I, you know, I mean, how much do they cost? You know, are they, are they power washes?
Yeah.
I don't know what they are. I mean, I'm envisioning a power washer, which is probably in the hundreds of dollars, not even in the thousands of dollars.
Oh, no, it's more than that. It's actually like a station with a boat.
It's a station? Okay, well, whatever. So the Freetown Boat Ramp, and I have nine state so-called boat ramps in my district, I'm very, very familiar with it. As a matter of fact, unfortunately, the Director of the Public Access Board, Jack Shepherd, just passed away last week. Who was seventy-six years old, five weeks after he retired. It's a shame. He built that boat, he built every boat ramp for the last fifty years in the state. The guy is amazing, was amazing, and a very good friend. But how they work is that the state puts up the capital dollars, in this case with Freetown, to redo all the redo, the asphalt redo, redo, design, engineering, construction work, then signs an intermunicipal agreement with the town that the town, it's really is town managed. The state has no management authority over that. And the community can, can charge a fee, but that fee has to be applied to the boat ramp. So the fee could be used to pay for porta-johns, could be used to pay for trash pickup, could be used to pay for a boat wash. You know, whatever it is. And, you know, and then it's supposed to, and maintenance, and future maintenance. So in other words, we put, the state puts a good hunk of money in, once makes it right, and then it takes care of itself in the future. But with that being said, I'm happy to help, look at.
Did the Freetown Board of Selectmen, I know you met with them to discuss the Lake District.
We met with them. We had a really nice.
Bring up the boat wash?
The boat wash.
I did.
Yeah.
Yep.
I did.
If that's what they want, we can see what we can do.
Because it sounds like.
I think it's something to consider.
Yeah, I don't think, it can't be that much money.
They have a lot of fish tournaments over there on the weekends.
And it's the invasive weeds that come in off of other people's boats from when they're different places, which is causing, you know, a lot of, and, and to me, it's like if you control the problem before the boat.
Right.
In the, then we have to, then we don't have to treat the water as much once it's, you know, because then you have this Lake District trying to.
Invasives are a big issue around the state in different ponds.
This one especially.
Yep, yep.
And, you know, okay.
It's shallow, right?
Yeah, very shallow.
It's shallow, that means the sunlight, that means the sunlight penetrates down to the bottom of the pond and, yeah.
I mean, if we don't want to do the, the boat wash, then at least we should do is inspections.
Yeah, but we.
You know.
Well, yeah, I think it's doable. I think it's doable.
Yeah.
I think it sounds like though where Freetown manages it, I mean, I think we want their buy-in for, you know, to make sure that if they're gonna have to do something.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, you know what I mean, from an operational standpoint.
Yeah.
I can speak to that. I've been working with Dave Knecht, who's the Freetown Town Administrator.
Yes.
And we looked at a couple of other projects, but they were like five years old for a boat wash.
Yeah.
About two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a boat wash.
Yep.
And they were looking into increasing their coverage because currently they only charge on the weekends if.
Yeah, it's wide open.
Yeah, so it's wide open during the week.
Yeah.
So if they did have a boat, a boat wash, they obviously, we need to change their staffing levels to make sure that people were using it and, you know, and going on like that. But I know that two of the selectmen had been interested in hearing more about it. And, and the town administrator was, was interested in it.
Good, good.
Okay, we'll send you a request.
Absolutely, and, and Freetown's one of my communities also, so I'm happy to help. Yeah.
That would be great.
Yep.
Yep.
Excuse me.
No, I was just gonna say, I know, I'm gonna reach out to the group and, you know, just try to meet with them for their information session and tell them that, you know, you can help us. You know, maybe we can get, you know, some help. And, and again, you know, people, the property tax, property values are gonna go down, da, da, da. So, I mean, I appreciate what they're trying to do. It's just if we could help, that would be great.
But the level of funding they're talking about just won't do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just won't do, it won't do much at all.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, 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 I mean, it makes perfect sense to me that if you're gonna start attacking the invasives, first deal with them. Because you don't want to spend a lot of money and time and effort to get rid of them, and then they just keep coming in.
They just keep coming back in, right.
You're right, it's gotta be dealt with first.
Okay.
Right. That would be great.
And you start talking about putting chemicals into water.
Right, that then goes into the water supply.
Yeah, yeah, if it's a, if it's a.
I was specifically talking about chemicals.
Okay, but, you know, I mean, that's a whole.
Well, they call them treatments.
I'll take that back.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Yep.
So that would be great.
People really have something to say about that.
That, which is fine, which is fine.
Yeah.
So the last thing is, I know there's a bill out there having to do with some funding for renovations of police and fire stations. I don't know, you know, where that stands. I know that's probably pretty remote, you know, under the conditions of the state right now for that to happen. But, you know, we got an issue with the fire department. We have a beautiful building here now, you know, which now paid a hundred percent for, of course, but if there was any money coming for renovations of fire station, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I haven't heard of any.
I haven't either.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forget, I should have given.
Did you have a?
I'm sure there is a bill filed, there's seven thousand bills filed, so they can file anything but, so I, I don't doubt you at all.
You know.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if it was something that you'd seen had been filed or you were looking to be filed.
No, it has been.
So it has something, there's, yeah, I'm.
Anyways.
Yeah.
So that's it. If you guys have anything else you want to bring up or say, we appreciate you coming. It's great.
Thank you. It's great working with you. You've got a wonderful team, you know, Marina Lorrain, we're, you know, we're frequent callers and, you know.
Yep.
And so whatever we can do to help, we partner with you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, through this whole mess, you know how to get ahold of us.
Yep.
If anybody is trying to get ahold of us, you know how to.
Yep, absolutely.
Tell them that we're available.
Yep.
We're all gonna make it.
We will. Someday we'll look back at this and say, remember when?
Yep.
Hope it's sooner than later.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, we all are, yeah.
Yep.
So let's do our part now so that we can keep it as short.
And I do appreciate, anytime I reach out, I always get Jeremy, you know, always get answers quickly and from both your offices, so it's great.
Very good.
Yep, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Yeah, bye.
I'm worried.
All right, so what time is it? Yeah. So next on our agenda, we have a hearing on the transfer, on an application for the transfer of a Class Two license at thirty-five Bedford Street. Hearing time was to start at seven, so we are definitely in that. So the first thing I'll do for the hearing is read the actual public notice that went out. Pursuant to chapter one forty, section fifty-nine of the general laws, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the application of David Gurgis and Gurgis Automotive Services for a transfer of the Class Two Motor Vehicle Sales License currently being exercised at thirty-five Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Said hearing will be held in the Rita A. Garbutt Community Meeting Room at the Lakeville Police Station, three twenty-three Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts, at seven o'clock P.M. on Monday, March sixteenth. Signed by Gileah Fabian, John Partley, Richard LeCamera, the three Board of Selectmen. And this was posted in the Middleborough Gazette on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. So I will entertain a motion to open the hearing for the transfer of the Class Two Motor Vehicle Sales License from Shaunick Auto Body and Repair to Gurgis Automotive Services.
So.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, seeing no one here, I don't know if anyone.
Ben, I'm here. I contacted Mr. Garbutt, seeing if he'll be able to be present.
Okay, all right. So no one to really swear in. There, right now, we have no one speaking, so. Just.
I just, I just, I just have one question, Tracy, and I don't know if you can answer this. I'm looking at the application. It says that your principal business of sales is new motor vehicles? I don't think that's the case, is it? First page.
No, this is a, this is a, it's Class Two.
Right, so, but why would it say sales of new motor vehicles? And then if you go on to the second page.
Oh, I think he just.
I got a mistake?
I think he just filled it out incorrectly.
Okay, because the second page on page eight, are you recognized as an agent of a motor vehicle manufacturer? And the answer is no.
Right.
So I would say we need to cross that off.
Yeah, he's, he's intending to keep it as a Class Two. He's just transferring exactly what they have now.
Okay, so we'll cross that off?
Yeah.
I assume that he's gonna be doing all those repairs there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And he did send out the certified notices. He sent out five notices to a Butters. Four were, were the green cards we returned, and one was never picked up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to vote to close the hearing?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the transfer of the Class Two License Motor Vehicle Sales License currently being exercised at thirty-five Bedford Street by Shaunick Auto Body and Repair to David.
Gurgis.
Gurgis, okay, of Gurgis Automotive, to expire on January first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Aye, second. Any discussion?
All set.
I'm all set too. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Time, we have seven sixteen, so we can go right into the next poll hearing. At seven fifteen on Monday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty, at the Lakeville Police Station Community Meeting Room at three twenty-three Bedford Street, the Selectmen will consider the petition of Middleborough Gas and Electric and Verizon requesting permission to locate poll number five on Pantheon Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, to accommodate a new home under construction. The new poll is, the poll installation is to provide utilities to a new house being constructed right on Pantheon Road.
Ben, I'm here.
Yep.
Need a motion to open the hearing because this is a, I do.
Oh, this is a hearing too, I'm sorry.
So moved.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any, any questions or anything? Same thing. No one's here to speak on it. Looks like everyone was notified.
Question, yeah.
Yes, but I received notification from us. I spoke to Mr. Taylor today and he was questioning whether he needed to be here tonight. I said, no, he didn't.
Okay.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the hearing?
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions, conversation about it?
No, I'm set.
Okay.
I move to approve the placement of poll number five of Pantheon Road in Lakeville.
Aye, second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's done. So we're gonna go right to Board of Selectmen announcements.
Ben, I'm here.
Yes?
Did anyone contact the fire chief to let him know he should come on down?
Yeah, okay, thank you. So just some current announcements. All those, everyone pretty much aware, the COVID nineteen coronavirus has been found in Massachusetts. We would like for people to stay informed with the most up-to-date information. We do have information on the town's website about how the town is handling a lot of questions, departments, closings. So we refer people to the town's website to get a lot of information that is really kind of up-to-date as of today. Other announcements we have right now.
Ben, I'm here.
Yes.
That's gonna be canceled.
Yes. We had a rabies clinic that was advertised on April four. Chances are that's going to be canceled. So the only other thing I would like to say is that in general, right now, because of the, you know, nature of what we have going on, I would take some of these dates for, you know, make sure you question or find out if events will still be held or not. I don't even know if we wanna. There was supposed to be a Middleborough Gas and Electric Energy Workshop on March twenty-eighth, but the library is gonna be closed. So that's another example of a lot of these things that you may have seen advertised. I would. that you may have seen advertised. I would, you know, caution people to just check to be sure with all the rules and regulations that we're now under and everything is changing very quickly. And we are up to date and meeting regularly to make sure that we are trying to do all that we can to for everyone's safety here in Lakeville. Um, I don't see any public here for public input, so I guess we can move right along. Uh, let's see.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to see for the town administrators' board, but I could go through the closings if you would like.
Um, do we want to do it under new business or?
Okay.
Well, let's do that under new business. Um, or it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, um, let's get a couple more things done and then we'll. Um, agenda item number six, so we are reviewing a tower use approval letter with American Tower Corporation and license agreement with the City of Taunton, and we may be voting to authorize a town administrator to sign those agreements. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tower use approval letter agreement with American Tower Corporation and the license agreement with the City of Taunton for use of cell tower space and authorize a town administrator to sign both agreements.
So moved.
I'll second. Um, any discussion?
No, the, uh, the police chief has, you know, reviewed these agreements and we're all set.
Okay, pretty much everyone that's been working on this, I think, has given it their seal of approval. So, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, let's see. Let's see, item, uh, agenda item number seven. Discuss a request from the Cannabis Control Commission letter for Monroe Associates. So we have received a municipal notification of a marijuana establishment from Monroe Associates LLC requesting that the Selectmen confirm that the applicant's establishment is in compliance with municipal bylaws or ordinances. So what we need to do here is, uh, um, I'll entertain a motion pursuant to nine thirty-five C.R. five hundred point one oh two one D. The Lakeville Board of Selectmen affirms that Monroe Associates LLC proposed marijuana retail license at three ten Kenneth Welch Drive is in compliance with municipal bylaws or ordinances and authorizes the chairman to sign the municipal response.
So moved.
I'll second. All those in favor?
I just want to make sure people realize this is already an existing host agreement. This is not anybody.
Yes, yep. All those in favor of?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so, um, yeah, so this is a company that we already, um, have a host community agreement that just has a change. Um, well, they, the letter coming from the Cannabis Control Commission. Anything to add, Maureen Rich?
All set.
No, all set.
Okay.
The letter from House will attach, just to let us confirm that we're just, you know.
Just saying that there, following along the bylaws and ordinances. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number eight. We have a request from Alan Swanson for the renewal of a temporary storage trailer permit at one thirty-five Precinct Street. So Mr. Swanson has submitted his request for, um, the renewal of this temporary storage trailer permit. And, um, I do know that Nate Darling, the building inspector, um, has submitted uh, information on this, so he's looked at it.
I make a motion to approve Alan, Alan Swanson's, uh, request for renewal of a temporary storage trailer permit at one thirty-five Precinct Street, the permit expiring on March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Aye, second. And the letter of, from Nate, Nate Darling, building commissioner, says he's reviewed the location, reviewed the location. Yep, and I do, temporization, okay. Um, anything else? No?
Almost it.
Okay.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could just.
Yep.
Um, remotely. Um, we, we have a few things that, um, just, uh, for me personally, whenever I see temporary, and then I see temporary being renewed, and I see it being renewed and renewed again.
Yep.
I always question, do we wanna have anything else that says permanent or, I mean, the, the temporary status?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, they would have to go to the Board of Appeals to get a permanent trailer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just didn't know, um, you know, the, the process, 'cause I think.
Something you could talk to Nate about.
Yeah, it's the second one I've seen like this, that's been multiple year renewal.
Yep.
And on what's supposed to be a temporary.
Temporary, yeah. Um, that's all, sorry to interrupt. Yeah, no, no, that's okay. Um, yeah, 'cause, right, it's supposed to be temporary. Um, so I guess going forward, maybe we put in, we can talk about putting something in place where we investigate a little bit more before these are, um, but on this one.
Resilience clause?
Yes. Um, so on behalf of this one here, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, let's see. Um, the next agenda item is a request from the Lakeville Litter Lifters to hold the Great Massachusetts Cleanup of Lakeville on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty. Um, so, um, we can just entertain. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from the Lakeville Litter Lifters to use a highway department dump truck on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, for the Great Massachusetts Cleanup of Lakeville event.
So moved.
Um, I second. Um, so the only thing that I would say is, again, going back to the dates and with the nature of everything going on, that, um, even if we approve this, of course, it would be subject to any rules that are in place by the state or the town or federal government regarding coronavirus, so, um, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so on March fourth, um, during the March fourth meeting, we had taken a vote under new business to, um, authorize the town administrator to sign amendment number two to the Beta Group contract. As this was done under new business, uh, the board now needs to vote to ratify the previous vote, which was to approve amendment number two for Beta Group Incorporated and authorize the town administrator to sign it. So I will make a motion that we ratify that vote that was taken on March fourth.
So moved. Oh, second.
Um, all those in favor? Any discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The cover page says twenty-four on the minutes, but it's twenty-seven.
So, next item agenda is number eleven. We will, um, this is for, to review and vote the, um, and approve the Selectmen's meeting minutes of February twenty-seventh. I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, agenda item number twelve, meet with the fire chief, Mike O'Brien, um, to discuss the SAFER grant and the possibility of two additional firefighters. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. I know a lot going on in the pool today.
Well, for you too. We appreciate your efforts during this whole crisis here.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to start off with an update on the SAFER grant. Correct some, uh, bad information I may have passed on. Uh, I gave an estimate of about a, a two-year turnaround for the possible hiring for firefighters if we were to be awarded a SAFER grant. I had a meeting, I attended a, a fire chiefs conference in West, uh, Worcester recently and met with FEMA officials. And part of the delay that I was perceiving or seeing, um, was because of their change over to a new platform. So they're promising a, a more efficient process. They're, they're promising that decisions would be out by late July, um, of this year, and funding could be filed shortly after. I asked for statistics on the likelihood of a grant award, and they said that thirty percent of departments who apply for the SAFER grant in Massachusetts are, are successful. So, um, to me, if it's within, uh, with your approval, it would be a great opportunity for us to take a shot at something like this, um, apply for the, the two positions, not additional positions, uh, the two positions that, that I originally requested. Um, I feel strongly that the, uh, the positions would be beneficial to our mission. They changed the, they changed the quality of the service we provide, and they, they improved working conditions for our responders all around. Um, for instance, you know, if we had a, an accident or, or, uh, or a rescue situation in the middle of the night, uh, we know that we have an engine with rescue equipment going out the door versus waiting for off-duty responders to come in. So it's immediate, uh, response of all our needed equipment. Uh, we have, if it was a fire, we'd have immediate response of four thousand gallons of water versus the thousand gallons we currently respond with. It, uh, it really is a, a, a huge enhancement to our capability. So I guess I shouldn't jump too far ahead. Uh.
I have a question on that.
Absolutely, sir.
When do you have to, uh, some, when does the grant have to be submitted by?
They haven't announced the, uh, the opening, but usually it's a month-long, uh, window of opportunity to get a grant.
Okay, so it'll be come out soon, then, I would imagine.
Yeah, he, he kind of insinuated any, any, any time now.
Okay. Um, I would make a motion that we apply for that SAFER grant.
I'll second that. Um, any other questions that you have?
I have a follow-up question after we approve this.
Okay, and I know you said that you have someone who's, um, can help you do the grant already and everything else, so to help write it, mm. Okay, all those in favor of, um, the chief applying for the SAFER grant?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So the follow-up question to that, Chief, is that, um, are you saying then that we would wait to do anything before, until we get a decision on the SAFER grant?
Well, part of the things, I, I'd want to apply, everything I wrote right into that SAFER grant, I'd write, I want to stand by what I put down in the grant. And, and I wouldn't be lying if I said that, that the hiring of two firefighters would be a hardship on the town. Um, so we would have to keep, um, I don't know your, your will on this, and before, I, I don't assume to know your will on this, but I, I would say that it's important to the success of the grant that we not provide funding if that was your.
No, no, that's not the case. The question, the question is, is that, you know, if we apply for the SAFER grant, we were lucky to get it, okay, which would be June thirty, uh, July thirtieth, or something like that. Is that a fair statement?
That's when the announcement would be made, and then you have to fill these contracts and things, so it's.
So, um, so you're not talking about the two firefighters, uh, for the SAFER grant and two additional firefighters?
No, it's two firefighters total.
Okay, so we have to wait until the SAFER grant is either approved or not, I'm, I'm mistaken.
That's correct, sir.
Because they have to be new firefighters. You can't, you can't use people that are already hired. Is that correct?
You're, you're correct.
Okay, so that process then, um, for that timeframe, most likely would be August, September, or something like that, right?
I hope so, yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not saying you don't need the money now, but the question is, can we wait to fund this early fall?
Um, you mean if we don't, we're not successful in the, in the SAFER grant program?
Okay, well, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna go back a little bit then.
All right.
The SAFER grant is gonna be, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, it's the thirty.
It's seventy-five percent the first year, right?
Yep.
Okay, this proposal that you have is to hire two firefighters now without the SAFER grant.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a fair statement?
The, okay, the, the proposal that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for the, my initial, I'm sorry for the confusion. My, my initial intent was that I didn't think the SAFER grant would arrive, the funding would arrive in time.
I knew that, yeah.
And so now that it's my understanding that it will, it can.
Potentially will.
It potentially will. Um, I, I'm pushing for the SAFER grant as a first, a first-ditch thing. Um, and that would require approval for you in, um, an allocation of, like, almost contingency funds if the award comes for the, the twenty-five percent match, um, and, and salary and benefits.
Okay, so this right now is a hundred percent of the cost for two new firefighters right now.
Correct, yep.
So wouldn't it make sense, based upon, you know, your proposal here, that, um, we wait because, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's ninety-six thousand dollars for two new firefighters less overtime savings and so forth, that the cost of that SAFER grant would only be twenty-five percent of a hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Okay. So if you have money in your budget now that you can reduce your overtime costs when we get to that point, then wouldn't we be okay?
We would fund the, we would self-fund.
Yeah.
And additionally, we're running, we're running surplus usually on our EMS line as well. There's, there's usually, it's something that goes to free cash, I get it, but, uh, but typically we, we just.
You see my point?
Yeah, I absolutely see it.
I mean, there's no sense approving this, this proposed seventy-six thousand. We have some questions up above. You know, now, because, you know, we, we need the money, you know, right now, but in the fall, we would have additional money available. Or you might be able to do it by savings within your own budget. By twenty-five percent. It's costing you twenty-five percent.
Yep, the, uh, the, that twenty-five percent, basically, when we have three people on duty, we're forty percent less likely to have to hit the manpower button, which is toning up for it. And so I don't know what that number would be, so that, that figure, that dollar figure I gave you is kind of a conservative estimate. It could be more.
No, I, I, I understand all of that. What I'm saying is that, you know, there's no sense appropriating seventy-six thousand dollars and cutting, uh, tw- twenty-five thousand dollars in, in overtime right now, 'cause we don't know, we're not gonna be doing anything until August, maybe, maybe September, at the latest, at the earliest?
One of, I, I get what you're saying, yep.
I mean, we on the same page here?
Yep.
I just have one question to follow up on Rich's. Do we have to structure our budget in a certain way where it's allocated on that line, or do we just have to say that there is the flexibility to pay for it in the budget?
We have to demonstrate, we have to demonstrate that we've spent, we have to demonstrate what their salary would be and demonstrate that we've incurred twenty-five percent of the total cost for, for the next year.
Because the, the salary, the salary, the line, the salary line item includes everything from your hiring to, you know, to whatever. So it would not make a difference. It would still be in the salary. So I'm just throwing this out, so.
The only thing I'm, I'm worried about, and, and I would hope, I kind of, we've been busy lately, so I'd ever had a chance to, to meet with, with you all and offline, is, is that seventy percent chance that we don't get it. I mean, how do you have a, I mean, I would like a contingency, because the need's real. Um, of course, I would love to have the federal government pay for our, our needs, um, but I, I don't know how to tackle that, you know, without hurting my chances for a grant, like, have a backup plan. And, and I don't know if you, if you guys are welcome to, I, I'm open to any ideas, but the, the need's there and the, the likelihood of the grant, I mean, I'm, I'm confident because I, I just have a positive attitude and I, I think we can do it. Um, but if, if we fail, then, then we have to come up with another solution.
Okay, if we fail, then my opinion is we support you to do this.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
We have better ideas of where we are, you know, funding-wise in September, believe it or not.
Yep.
Than we do right now. Right now, all of our numbers are estimates, you know, conservative estimates, you know. And I think that we'd be better, no matter which way we go, whether it's the SAFER grant or whether we had the two firefighters. Is that a fair statement?
Yep, that is a fair.
Soon as I get re-elected, you know.
I gotta go drop some campaign banners. I'll be right back.
You, you see my point?
I absolutely see your point.
Okay, so.
It's, uh, makes sense to me.
Are we okay now?
I'm happy.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we all on the same page?
Yes, we are all on the same page.
Uh, yeah, no, I thank you both. I appreciate it very much.
Okay.
All right.
I did see the deputy, Purcell.
I did see Deputy Purcell come in, I just again want to reiterate our thanks for everything you guys are, guys and girls at the department are doing. It's a tough time right now and we have great people working in Lakeville and you guys are definitely two of them, so appreciate all your efforts right now, it's a crazy time, but we got this, right?
We, we got it because it's, you know, we met today, it's a team effort, we have the support of everybody, we have a great police department, we have good leadership, so we're gonna get through, we'll be all right.
Okay.
So, right now, I mean, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, based upon this projection, you seem to be okay with the amount of money you have in overtime.
I think we can, I don't think, I know that we can, we can fund our twenty-five percent.
Through, through, through...
Through savings.
Yeah, okay, all righty.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jose, for all your efforts, appreciate it.
Yep.
I know you've been going nuts.
We, we are on live, we did get cut out for about five minutes.
Okay.
But we're back on, so.
All right, good, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so agenda item number thirteen is remote participation for boards, committees, and commission members. I believe it was the town administrator that asked us to review this. Anything you wanna?
Yeah, I didn't know how, how different it would be a week later. So, we were discussing the remote participation and earlier meeting, and now it's in a place where we have it de facto because the governor has allowed it. I would like the board to consider voting it just for when we're out of emergency and it could be a tool we use going forward without having to wait for any emergency announcements.
Plan and place.
I think it'll up participation on the boards and I think it'll give some people some flexibility to volunteer for boards in the future.
Well, I, I think that I'm okay with it, but I, I'm hoping that Jose's solution that, you know, coming up here, you know, to go live, you know, I think is a better option where, you know, you, you can, I don't want to put words in your mouth, you can, you know, get on your laptop or your computer and you can actually participate live in the meeting, so.
That is gonna require additional software. I've been using Uber Conference the last few days and it's been working out pretty well, but I need to be able to tie it all in together to get it on the air. This is not going over live over cable TV, it'll be on tonight, I apologize for that, but making that connection has been a long project.
Right, okay, I understand that, because, you know, so I think...
It's not an either-or, you can do both.
Yeah.
We can have us live from this room and also have live participation on that TV with anyone who's calling in using Uber Conference on their laptop.
Okay.
So we can do a hybrid method and we can ensure the integrity of the vote of the board.
I mean, I don't know...
The only...
We don't want that to become an excuse either.
No, no, but at the same time, I see a lot of meetings that have canceled because of lack of quorum and, you know, I would like to think that people would be more valuable to their boards if they, they're stuck in a hotel somewhere far away and can chime in.
I don't disagree with a lot of that. My only thing is the need for this has never been more real than it is today and I think that once this crisis has subsided and every life is back to normal, I have a feeling a lot of this may get addressed from the state level, like what they said to us already, that, you know, they already changed the requirements, that a physical quorum isn't necessary. So I think before I'm ready to go all in, I almost want to just work right now with what the state's given us under these emergency and then do some work on this after this crisis. Maybe we don't even have to do as much work to it as possible, maybe the state will see that, you know...
Sure.
Will, will change their requirements, so, you know, because right here, quorum of the body, including the chair, that's one of the first things the state said was you don't need to have a physical quorum, so I just want to see how, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel if the state's gonna actually give it to us. I don't know if that makes sense to anyone other than me.
That was done by an executive order of the governor.
Right.
So this, this is general laws.
Yeah, I just, going forward after this, this crisis, I, I just, you know, would like to see how it may be changed at that level before we, I mean, do you want to speak to it?
There are two questions to this, and that is, does the town want remote participation with a quorum present in a physical space?
Yes.
And does the state require a physical quorum in the space? And right now, they do.
Yes, they do.
So the town cannot override that.
Correct.
So we'll see what happens when the emergency passes and whether or not the state allows for a virtual quorum, which I think it should happen, because we, we have in Lakeville too many meetings that don't happen because we don't have a quorum. It's gotten a little better since Mr. Powerley pushed the attendance list, but it still happens too often where Lakeham is wasting money on setup and it doesn't happen.
Okay, I'll do it either way, whatever you want to do.
I just have one caution, like, if we are going to wait, we are going to wait more than six months, this will be a year or two to address this if it goes through the legislature. So I don't know that we want to wait that long to address something that's a need now.
I also feel like this is a decision that maybe can wait a little bit because we have an election coming up and we, you know, have two seats that are up for elections, so I almost would like, I don't know, I would feel better not voting on it today, but certainly not letting it wait a year, because I do understand the need, because I think I was the one that brought it up to begin with, so.
Is it too late to put an article on town meeting on June 1st?
For this?
This is only has to be approved by the board.
And, but the board, can the Board of Selectmen override the state law?
Because it's not an override of state law, it already exists, it's Attorney General Regulations.
Yep.
It already exists.
Right.
All we have to do is approve it.
That, that a, a physical quorum is not necessary?
No, I can't change that.
No, no, no.
You can't change that.
See, my, my, my hesitation is, and this is what I spoke to before, is that when I had talked to our attorney about this, the most important thing was making sure that we can do this flawlessly, so, I don't know, I guess I'm still just a little nervous about that.
I guess, I guess the only thing would be that if we decide to do this tonight, then we have to put a procedure and a process in place for all of the boards and the committees, and that's, we haven't done that yet.
No, and...
So we really don't have time to do anything right now.
Well, you're right, but this is probably the best time because this is gonna be the least amount of committees and boards meeting for the next few weeks.
Yeah.
I can go either way.
It's up to you, you can wait.
What, do you have a big holdback on this?
No.
I mean, you know, if you had to say one negative or one positive, again, I was the one that brought it up before because I know that there's a need, but, all right. All those in favor of passing, do we even, did we make a motion?
No.
So...
Let's see, we gotta do...
I will make a motion to approve this remote participation policy.
Adopt.
Adopt this remote participation of policy.
So it looks like we have to accept the Attorney General's Regulations of nine forty CMR twenty-nine dot ten.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to do that?
Okay, I will second.
That what it looks like to you, Maureen?
Yes.
What's that, yep?
Yep, nine forty CMR twenty-nine point ten to A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, under new business, I am going to, we did have a meeting today between the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator with almost all the department heads, and we were discussing how we are dealing, we're changing business at Town Hall and different places, and again, I would just like to, you know, let folks know that even what we say today may change depending on what's happening at the state level. I know the President of the United States mentioned something today too about gatherings of ten people, so as of today, this is what we have decided to do going forward, so if you have that list, I will let Maureen, our Town Administrator.
So, this afternoon, in the meeting with Leah, the department heads, and some key personnel, we decided that we are going to shut down Town Hall for the public, people will still be working there, we are shutting down the COA to the public, we'll still be providing services like Meals on Wheels and the GATRA bus to pick, pick up prescriptions and to go food shopping. We are closing down the library to the public, it will still be staffed, but they will be, be working on inside projects and trying to do some outreach on Facebook and other platforms. We're closing the Highway Department to the public. The transfer station is only taking bagged trash at this time, they're no longer taking recyclables or construction materials. And then we have a noted exception that tomorrow, between the hours of eight AM and eight PM at the Town Clerk's office, we will be open for voter registration, but the building itself will not be open for other people to go through, and we'll be closing the door at the fire station, it'll still be in operation, we'll just be closing that front door.
I think that went over all of it. Yep, I know a couple of folks have said, oh, what's the big deal at the transfer station? Well, if people are just doing their bagged trash, then it'll move the lines quicker and we won't have groups of people, which is, again, the social distancing that we're supposed to be doing.
And there's transaction and touching of the actual physical recyclables like they do now.
Which the, the staff usually has to sort by hand, so we're just trying to limit the exposure to the staff too, because it would be great if we could, you know, keep working on the inside. We're going through the process of setting up collection boxes, people that, you know, we, people use the payment box all the time, but we're gonna hopefully have forms available, a lot of stuff's available online, but if there's something that, you know, you can't find, we're gonna try to make it as user-friendly in the front so that people can come in and get their things, they can drop it off, so we're still gonna keep trying to process, but we're gonna have the door closed just so that we can try to, you know, keep the groups from getting too big as they sometimes do when everyone's waiting at the different offices, but also try to keep our staff working inside so that we can still move, move things along. Again, there's tons of information that's being put on the website, we will have phone numbers posted too, so that if you have a specific question, if this can be done via, you know, the internet, or if it has to be done in person, then we'll be able, you'll be able to call offices. Town Administrator Selectmen's Office will be open for questions. And also, the other thing too, is that we are going to try to provide, you know, just email addresses so that maybe we can move questions quicker that way, but we are, we sat in a room today and we came up with as many scenarios as we could, trying to keep business, business going, but, you know, I think that's, that's good for right now. And again, you know, it all depends on what happens every day, we're all following the state news and...
Hourly.
Hourly, so...
Just to mention the minutes, the minutes, the meetings, is that, you know, this will most likely be the last Selectmen's meeting for the public, probably for at least a few weeks anyways, probably the first part of April. Any of the other meetings that are currently posted, that if they are absolutely necessary to have those meetings, they're being moved from the library to the police station, so all of the meetings will be here, so we don't have to keep cleaning buildings like the library and so forth where there is a number of meetings, so that's happening, some of them are being canceled, some of them are being rescheduled, so please check the calendar on the town website, which will show you which meetings we are gonna have and where they've been rescheduled and so forth, so.
Yeah, I think that's good. All right, any other?
Just, I wanted to reiterate that even though staff, you know, will be, will be fully staffed, people can call in, I mean, there will be the numbers available and there will be people answering the phones.
Yep.
And if we need to mail something out to you, we'll mail, we'll grab a stamp and mail it out to you.
Yep, if anyone has questions...
We're here to help, we just need to...
About absentee ballots.
Yes, that's gonna be important.
Because we're, hopefully, so far, the Attorney General hasn't really said too much about, you know, the elections and I think, again, I, I don't know anything they've said, I don't know if that's still gonna be the case in a week or two from now, so as it stands, we're going to try to have our election, our local election, on April sixth.
Six.
So if anyone would want to do an absentee ballot, they can make that request and the ballot can be mailed to you, so...
They can do it online.
They can do it on that request online.
They can do it online, where they call the Town Clerk's Office.
Yep.
And they will mail it out, you know, to you.
Yep.
And the absentee ballots are available now.
Yep, they're available now, so, you know, Tracy, do you have anything to add? No, okay.
It's very, very complicated to try to change the...
The election.
The election, it has to be done by court order right now, believe it or not. The other problem that we have is that since we have joint regional school committee members between Freetown and Lakeville, those elections have to be done simultaneously, so both towns have to agree on date, and as far as I know, the Freetown is going ahead, but they haven't said anything to the Town Clerk yet.
Lakeham is going forward with the candidate interviews tomorrow and candidate mini-debate in one of the races. We have run into a little snag, and that is Rita Garbutt is in Arizona, and she's supposed to be flying back tomorrow, so we may have to do her interview remotely if she doesn't make it back. But otherwise, we will have that on the air as soon as we can to inform the voters, and we'll include information about voting by mail.
Okay, that would be great, yep. Okay, any other new business that we have? Okay, old business, it almost seems, it's not secondary, but it almost seems the FY21 budget, I'm glad we did a lot of the in-person budget meetings and a lot of that stuff is done, but, you know, we still have parts of the budget to discuss.
Yeah, we'll just continue in that process and probably, you know, probably now it'll just be the first part of April before we pull everything all together. I forgot, I should have asked the superintendent today when we saw him that, I don't know if the regional think com meeting has been canceled or so...
They haven't said yet, and I will reach out and double-check. I think originally they said that they were gonna do some remote participation, so...
But the remote participation, once again, requires somebody to be there, the chairman to be on-site, so...
Yeah, so I'll double-check and see what they're doing.
Whatever, you know, so that's, okay.
So, an update on the, I'm sorry, I'm very distracted because it just seems like right now the update doesn't... it just seems like right now the update doesn't, there's so much more going on, but, um, an update on the Ted Williams Camp Drainage Project.
Um, Maureen and I have, uh, met with the, uh, sorry. Maureen and I have, uh, met with the, uh, the Chairman of the Park Commission and, uh, one of the other members, you know, to talk about some issues, you know, with the Park Commission that needs to be addressed. And one of those issues was the parking lots. And so, uh, we are in the process of, uh, putting out an RFP for the soccer parking lot and the, uh-
Karate Studio.
Thank you. The Karadio Studio Parking Lot. So, um, with a combination of monies that are available on the Park Commission and some town money that we have available, we feel that we could do that project and do those both projects. So hopefully that's out right now. When does it do back?
It's out March eighteen.
Days?
Coming back, bud?
No, March eighteen.
Saturday, Sunday, so it'll be what, two weeks after that?
Um, it's two weeks and a day after that.
Okay.
April second.
So, April, whatever, first part of April, so that's good. And then what we agreed to do was the, uh, the main parking lot over near Loon Pond Lodge, that we would, uh, address that after July first. So, to look at what, what those options are. So, uh, we've made a lot of progress in trying to improve, uh, those areas because those have been a problem for a number of years.
And I would probably mention that, uh, the parks went ahead and, um, fixed the lighting.
Oh, good.
Also, so that happened, uh, today. I got the notice that that's been completed. So the lighting, um, that was a problem within the last election, um, that it was so dark in there will be less of a problem.
Now, one of the other things that, you know, we talked about, I can do that in the next session.
No, it's all right, we can go on to that one, um, restructuring.
So, an update on the, uh, Department, the Park Department restructuring. Um, and once again, we met, you know, I met with the Park Commission once in December, and then Maureen and I met with, uh, the Chairman and the, uh, one of the other members to talk about how we could better utilize the staff, you know, between the Highway Department and the, uh, the Park Commission. And they just, uh, we just had a retirement that, uh, the person had been there for ten years, I think, a long time, eight or ten years, somewhere in there. So he's retiring and, uh, then, so what we decided to do was to restructure how the Park Commission maintains the outside, you know, of the billings. And that really is to do all the grass cutting and maintain the grounds and so forth and so on. So, uh, what we're going to do is hire a foreman that's gonna be responsible for all the parks, which would include the Ted Williams, John Pond and Claire Pond, and then also a laborer that would work, you know, for that foreman. And those, those staff would report directly to, uh, the Highway Superintendent. And the reason why we're doing that is because it's very difficult when you have a five-member board and the person responding to that five-member board, it can be a problem. So what we agreed to do is to have the Highway Superintendent meet with the, uh, the Park Commission as need basis to come up with a plan as to what, what needs to be done for that season and so forth. So I think this is a great step forward for everybody, and, uh, we all know that the Highway, um, Superintendent does a great job right now. I know that he'll do a great job doing this as well. So, that's the plan. We got the job description ready to go.
Yep.
Uh, I would imagine we'd probably hire the laborer first because, you know, we could do that now, cause there is money available, you know, to do that, and then we gotta move that other process forward. So.
Yep.
So I think this is a good thing for everybody. So, glad this is happening.
I agree. If I could mention, um, our parks are probably the only parks I've heard of that have had to have the responsibility of maintenance like that, um, you know, on a, on a five-member board without having someone like an official Parks Director or, or someone that has some structure under them to really support it. So this is gonna be much better for them in the long run as they can focus on, um, working with the leagues and, and making the improvements that they want to see, um, and leaving the, um, the stuff that is really under Franklin's, uh, level of expertise and from his history, um, to him. And I think it's a great split for the town.
Well, there's a lot of other things, you know, we had a, we've had a terrific winter. And there's so many things that, you know, he's done, you know, throughout the town. And if we had that opportunity in the, in the, in the parks, you know, this year, that these people would be working, you know, under him. And they could do things like, you know, cleaning up trees and cutting down trees and cleaning brush up and, and so forth to make the parks, you know, look a lot better. So, so this is gonna be, I think, a positive thing for everybody.
I agree. The people of the town will really benefit from it.
So the, the last thing we talked about with the Park Commission was that, uh, you know, what we're gonna do, we already did John Pond, is to look at what the requirements are, that we need to fix some things. Uh, we can't do everything all at once, but at least if we get a list together of things that need to be done at John Pond and Claire Pond and the Ted Williams, uh, Park, you know, then this would, you know, uh, help everybody because once again, if we have some resources available, they can go in and fix things and so forth and so on. And then, of course, we do need some capital improvements, you know, here and there, you know, throughout the, uh, our park system. So, uh, we're gonna be working on that, uh, throughout the spring and the summer to get that all together too. So, these are all good things.
It is good. Yep. Um, so the last thing that we have under old business is, um, the Route seventy-nine Improvement Project. And I, for one, would just, um, like to thank, uh, Selectmen of the Camera for all the work that he put into that. Um, I can honestly say I didn't hear one negative feedback, negative comment about the, um, the information night on, that we did on the eleventh, the public forum. Um, I had people tell me that they felt like, um, people got there a little early so they could talk to the engineering firm, they stayed a little late. The engineering firm was very accommodating, talking to people individually about their property and where it is on the, you know, the scope of the project. And I just think that, um, information goes a long way. And I, 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 I just really want to thank everyone, Lorraine, um, Maureen, Tracy, for everybody's help, especially, you know, for you, Rich, you kinda took that one and, and, uh, put a, a lot of information into it. And I, I guess when people are happy, it, it's because they have an understanding. But I do want to thank the folks from Beta, you know.
They did fabulous job.
They, 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 they did. They worked individually with people. And, you know, sometimes people, you know, are not in favor of a project or afraid of a project just because they don't necessarily understand everything. And I think it was just a really great informational night, and people actually got their, not just their general questions, but a lot of people got their very specific questions answered too.
And, and they've been coming to the office?
Yeah.
So, um, last week, not so much this week.
Yeah.
Um, they've been coming to the office and getting to, we have the, the visuals and we kept that. And they've looking at their individual, uh, maps. And I know Lorraine's had a lot of people, um, and she's been talking to them, and I've had a few of them. And they, after they went, they said, you know, before I, I, I went there, I was against it, and now I'm not.
Right.
So that was really positive.
I thought, didn't you say, Lorraine, that a lot of the maps are online now too?
They are.
So even though we may not have the door open right now, they can certainly call and you can help them.
Yep.
Navigate their way there if they need help, um, to get to that.
I'd like to thank all of you. That was, that was the best presentation I've ever seen. But I also want to thank, uh, Don Lopes at the high school.
Yes.
And his crew who set that up.
Yep.
And all, all, all of it. It was very, very good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, they're great.
So the forum is on Lakeham, so if anybody else, you know, wants to take a look at it, and certainly if there's any questions, uh, probably the best person is calling Lorraine.
Yep.
And she can help you. And if there's a question about the engineer, we can get in touch to the engineer, uh, to ask. I already had somebody actually go to me directly, which is fine. Uh, so I'm waiting for a response from Beta.
And Lorraine's categorizing, uh, categorizing all of those responses and keeping them in a document. So anything anyone has, um, if they go to her, that would be great. And that way we can have it in one document and then she can share it with Beta.
Just, just a reminder that, you know, originally it was four million dollars and now it's two point three million dollars. And that's for this specific project only, which is important. And it's on the ballot, you know, on the April sixth election. So, whether you're for or against it, please vote.
Come out and vote. Yep.
One more thing. I'd like to thank the Lakeham crew too.
Yes.
For coming out and doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I, I, you know, you guys are the folks in the background. And, I mean, I think Lakeham does, you know, a, a really, a fantastic job. I've been a fan of Lakeham for many, many, many years.
Yes, my, my kids recognize the opening music. They're like, oh, she's watching a meeting again.
Yeah, and you too, Jose, you do so much. But, and, and I know that you've been working double time this last week so that we can be prepared to be, you know, working remotely. It's a lot of work. It really is. And, and, you know, we, I, I, I appreciate your efforts. I'm sure I can speak for the group that, you know, we all, um, appreciate your efforts. And it's that teamwork that's gonna get us through these next few challenging weeks. But again, if, um, anyone has any questions on, you know, what's open at Town Hall or Town Department or, um, and then, um, I know Rick Madera said that they were gonna be fielding questions to the schools. Um, but please, you know, give us a call right now. We're still gonna try to have staff as long as that doesn't change. And we are watching the news diligently. Anything else?
Yeah, just another items, uh, I don't know, I've got a letter here from, uh, Sun Multi-Sports, which is the triathlon that's gonna be in June, uh, June twentieth. And they have donated fifteen hundred dollars and five hundred's going to, uh, Lakeville Senior Center, Lakeville Parks Department, and DECA Program at the high school. So, like, thank you.
Yeah, that was great. Yep. Um.
That's all.
Okay, if that's it, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.